Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Mr. Phelan.
Yes, sir. The Auburn Public Library Board, Bill Shurling has served two full terms on the Public Library Board. I'd like to thank Ron Andrews because he helped me on this and we finally got David Houseall to volunteer to be a member of the Library Board. As everybody, I think, knows, he's been the athletic director at Auburn University. He's very involved in the community and he's, on top of everything else, he's an avid reader and I'm sure he's going to do a great job on the Library Board. I think he's the, Chris, is he the only male on the Library Board right now? I think that's true, is it not?
Yes, if you'll be taking his place.
So, he's a male on the Library Board. I'd like to nominate David Houseall for the Library Board.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will make that appointment on the regular agenda. And we do have on tonight's agenda two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission and that is the board that the mayor recommends looking for the council to approve. So, one of those would be David Best, who is my recommendation, who already serves on the Historic Preservation Commission. So, that would be my first nomination.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we'll make that on the regular agenda. Now, we have one resume that continues to be carried over and it does happen to be a resident of the historic district, which we have gotten numerous requests that we have someone from the district. And actually, I think that's a good idea. This particular resident has a significant investment and lives in the district, so I would like to nominate Steve Jenkins.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second for Steve Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll make that later on the regular agenda. All right, questions on the agenda for City Manager Buston?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I would, as I did last year, we're two days removed from celebrating the resurrection of our Lord and Savior and during a moment of silence, I would join with Christians all over the world and say in the Lord's Prayer and just ask anybody who would like to participate to please participate with me.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions from any council member for the city manager?
Mayor, we do have one item of other business. It's item 11A, which is a request for an alcohol beverage license that I'd like to put on the other business agenda.
All right. Council has no problem. We'll add that on to other business. If there are no other questions.
Mayor, real quick, I just want to commend Dr. Busman at Auburn High School. What a great celebration last week in recognition of our Vietnam veterans from all over the area. It was a long time in coming. It was a well-planned event staged at the new auditorium at Auburn High School and I thought it was very memorable and there was a lot of work that went into it. The students were involved as well as Dr. Busman and the staff at Auburn High. I know our own Captain Phelan was a part of that group that was recognized. I'd like to ask in the audience, is there any other Vietnam veterans that are here with us tonight?
Thank you, Captain Phelan.
I guess I'm the oldest one in here.
There is one, I'm sorry.
Was there one in the back?
Let me share one thing with you, Ron, since we've got a little bit of time, but I was very emotional about welcoming home Vietnam. When I came back from Vietnam and I'd already spent eight years in the Navy, but I came back from Vietnam at the beginning of 1973. March of 1973, all the POWs were released. Well, when I came home, I landed in Hawaii. They told me to take off my uniform. I was going to San Francisco and if I got off in San Francisco and had my uniform on, somebody'd spit on me. Now, I had spent a year getting shot at occasionally and shooting back every once in a while and I have been at it, I have been emotional about that for the last 45 years. I was glad Dr. Busman did it. I was glad he did it for everybody that was involved in Vietnam and as Ron said, not only was the whole place packed, but people were standing up. We had people from Lafayette, we had people from all over eastern Alabama that were there. I enjoyed it immensely and thank you for bringing it up, Ron.
Thank you for everything you did.
Ron, do appreciate that and for all of you out there, please remember our mayor's Memorial Day breakfast on Memorial Day at 8:00 at the AU Hotel where we have an opportunity to honor our fallen veterans, but certainly to honor all veterans and it's a great occasion. We have a lot of military, folks with military background in this community and it's a very worthwhile morning to get you started on Memorial Day, so I would urge your attendance there if you're able to do so. All right, is there a move to adjourn from the committee of the hall?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, we are adjourned and Lindsey, you can call the roll when you're ready.
Here.
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 Here. If you'd all please stand and join us in pledging allegiance to our flag and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, and Son, and God, the kingdom, the nation. Be done on earth as is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. The kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen.
May be seated. All right, I'm going to come down tonight and introduce each of you to not only our Employee of the Month, but we are excited also to introduce you to those recipients of service pens tonight. All right. I read a letter to you that was sent to the city manager from Tim Woody, our Environmental Services Director. Montary Smith was hired in 2000 as a runaway maintenance worker. He was challenged early in his career to become proficient with operating all the equipment in the environmental department. As a result of his hard work, he was subsequently promoted to equipment operator. Montary's supervisor frequently received compliments from his peers, citizens, and other managers about his skill for operation of various facilities. Montary, as an essential part of the department's game day team, which is responsible for ensuring the downtown area, is returned to normal after special events in the rolling of Timber's Corners. In recognition of his excellent service during game day cleanup activities, he recently received a pat on the back award from the Auburn Beautification Council. He also takes the initiative to tend to the runaway areas of the city's technology parks to help ensure their appearance is acceptable. In another testament to Montary's hard work and dedication, Auburn University's street sweeping operations team spent an entire day observing his efficient operations throughout the city and is calling to assist when they've had issues with street sweeping needs on campus. Lastly, he has taken the boom cutter and mastered the art of trimming overhanging limbs while mulching the area and leaving little or no debris. Recently, he took the initiative to spend a little extra time in the intersection of Airport Road and Sogah Ashi Road to not only improve the sight distance in all directions, but to significantly improve the overall appearance in the area. As a result of all that aforementioned accomplishments and others, it is with great pleasure that I nominate Montary Smith as Employee of the Month, April 2018. All right, let me ask Wanda Martin to come up. Wanda from our Human Resources Department. All right, Tim Johnson, Water Resource, five years. Ben Royston, Public Safety Fire Division, five years. Must have been a good hiring time five years ago. All right, Louis Carino, Public Safety Police, 10 years. Philip Bohannon, they told me earlier might be on the call, is that right, Chief? Well, we appreciate what he does, but we'd rather be on the call. Sorry, that's where he is, but send him, we will catch up with him. Jason Rawls, Public Safety Fire Division, 15 years. Is there a move to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Thank you, Councilman Beard, for catching that. Oh, Andrews, okay. Well, you've got a lot of eyes up here. All right, let's see. Who are we going to hear from tonight? Ashley or Caroline or? We've got a new team of great help from the SGA. We hosted, or they hosted, and many of the council members attended last week a town hall and we appreciate all the good work you did.
Well, thank you guys for coming. It was a wonderful time. I'm so excited to take this position this next year. I feel that Mary Margaret did an amazing job last year and I'm excited to better our relations and continue down this great road that we're on. My name's Karen Willby, for those of you that I haven't met. I'm a freshman. I'm double majoring in accounting and political science and I'm just excited to get this year rolling. Thanks for all you do, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you all for being here. So, at this time, also, I want to go back and talk a little bit in mayor's communications before we get started with citizens' communications, if you could. Obviously, many of you are here for a reason of height, I would guess. Many of you have been here before, many of you may be here for something else, but I do want to start off with a statement and typically I don't read things, but rather than ramble on, I could go back quite a few years talking about the downtown and basically having grown up there, but I'll be a little more concise than that. So, for the past several months, there's been considerable discussion within the Auburn community concerning new developments in downtown Auburn. I think that's a fair statement. Much of the discussion is centered on height limitation of buildings and the city council has spent many hours listening to constituents both for and against the 75-foot maximum height. After listening carefully and considering this matter over an extended time, I've come to the conclusion that, and I've heard from a lot of you, that maybe the height is not the biggest issue. Maybe it's about design of the buildings even more so than the height. So, over the years, I've been on the city council or served as your mayor, the downtown has been a priority for the city. In the 80s, the city worked with property owners in upgrading the appearance of buildings on College Street and Magnolia Avenue by hiring an architect to develop facade improvement drawings. Many of you that have been here for an extended number of years will remember that the look and the facades on the buildings that you see now, very few were the way they are now in the early 80s. So, the city worked with property owners on the appearance of those buildings in College and Magnolia Avenue. So, at that time, there were a lot of boarded-up buildings in downtown Auburn. There were empty lots. There were two or three buildings that literally the roof had fallen in on and were sitting there dilapidating and rotting away, quite frankly. So, the city participated in a UDAG grant to modernize some of those buildings and bring them up to code. The city also participated in construction of Magnolia Plaza and partnered with Auburn University to build the Hotel Conference Center in the early 80s. In the mid-80s, the city constructed the current parking deck to go with the parking lot the city acquired parcel by parcel in the 70s. The zoning ordinance was amended in 1984 to allow residential living on second floors and above that, and living, and that second floor living has been a key factor in revitalization of downtown and the Hudson Building is adjacent to it is an example. So, in the 1990s, the post office moved from downtown where the current city hall is and the council purchased the building and in 2001 converted it to its current use as city hall. I think a centerpiece for downtown. This building had long been an important public building in our community and over the years, the city has had several downtown studies completed and in recent years has increased commitment to the downtown by upgrading infrastructure and increasing beautification through landscaping and new streetscaping. For many years, we've had the good fortune of having longtime Auburn families committed through ownership of downtown buildings and businesses. They remember the times when there were dilapidated structures that I mentioned, empty lots, and they've witnessed the resurrection of the downtown to an extremely viable place. They, like the city, realize the downtown is evolving as the city grows and many have expressed support for redevelopment, many are against, in the downtown area. The city in the 80s had one-half, a little less than one-half, the population that Auburn does today and the downtown has definitely changed as a result. Auburn is the envious cities throughout the South. I've talked to mayors all over the southeast that would love to have the problems that we are facing. So, unfortunately, many of those towns and downtowns are not attracting investments and continue to decline. You've all been to them, you know the ones I'm talking about. Our challenge is to be sure that the investments that are made in our downtown aesthetically add to the downtown and are not eyesore's. I reiterate, the problem is maybe not the additional 10 feet, but maybe it is what's noticeable in the architecture, design, and structure. We're extremely fortunate to have experts in our community who can be called upon to review the designs proposed for major buildings in the downtown area. As a result, I would like to ask the council to consider appointing a task force to closely work with our planning department, our planning commission, and developers to be sure that the structures built in the downtown are compatible with the rest of downtown. While I want you to understand, they have no legal power to mandate design changes under Alabama law, the planning department, the planning commission will rely on the expertise of these individuals to foster ideas. I've talked to a number of developers across the state in the last two or three days who understand certainly what the laws are, but would welcome input and insight from qualified individuals. And so, I have three citizens in mind that I would like to ask the council to consider. And we would like to, I would like to ask the council to consider calling this the Design Review Committee or Design Review Task Force. I have three individuals that I've spoken to that are willing and ready to help in this endeavor. One of those is Dan Hinson. Dan is a 20-year, 21-year resident of Auburn. His family has lived and worked in Lee County for five generations. He's held the position of Head of Auburn University School of Architecture, Planning, and Landscape Architecture for 10 years. Currently teaches courses in architectural design, professional architectural practice, and leadership. He founded the Design Habitat Program, a 17-year national collaboration with Habitat for Humanity. He's an active community volunteer in Lee County and across the state and he currently serves on the Board of the National Architectural Accrediting Board. He served the National Board of Association of Collegiate Schools of Architecture. He's a registered architect. His design work has been recognized with national, state, and local awards for design excellence. David holds a Master of Architecture from the University of Pennsylvania in 1983 and a Bachelor of Architecture from Auburn University in 1982. Further, a planning commissioner that serves as the mayor's designee, Dr. Dan Bennett, 18-year resident of Auburn, a native of Alabama, whose families lived and worked in the state for generations. Held the position of Dean, Auburn University College of Architecture and Design and Construction for 11 years. Held the position of Dean of the University of Arkansas School of Architecture for nine years. Has been a board member of the Alabama Board of Registration of Architects since 2008 and received the Auburn University Alumni Association Lifetime Achievement Award in 2013. He serves on the University of Arkansas Architectural Design Review Board, served as a commissioner of the Alabama Historical Commission for 12 years, and, as I mentioned, serves on the City of Auburn Planning Commission as the mayor's appointee. He's a registered architect. Works been cited with national, regional, and state awards for design excellence. He holds a Master of Architecture and Urban Design from Rice University and a Bachelor of Architecture from Auburn University. I further, from the citizen ranks, would like to recommend Anna Dennis Solomon, Anna Solomon, as you would know her. Anna currently works in the School of Pharmacy. Anna has a long list of credentials, but those of you that know Anna know that without question, she is committed to the love of this community and is a member that I think would serve with distinction. So, having said that, I would also like to recommend that we have either one or two, we'll confer with Mr. Buston on that, but staff members to join this group. And I would ask if the council approves us moving forward with this, that Mr. Buston would come back at the next meeting with the details. Obviously, it's easy for me to sit up here and give them, give this council names of some highly creditable individuals, but the proof is in the details of how this all comes together. So, I would like to ask Jim to do that, provided that you, the council, think this is a good idea.
Mayor, I think it's an excellent idea and I think it's something we've been needing for a while and the three individuals you put on there are impeccable people that I know in the community, especially Ms. Solomon, so I'm all for it.
I guess I would ask, does anyone in the council have a problem doing this?
I don't have a problem, Mayor. Of course, Jim will work out the logistics of how this would work. I know we've talked about before, the community that comes to mind within the state that does this, since it is, as you said, a non-binding thing, is the city of Mountain Brook. And I would hope that we can contact them, see how they...
We actually have met with them.
Right, we have talked to them to figure out how something like this can be done.
How do they take something that's non-binding and give it to you?
What I think our challenge will be, and we have to work out the details, I would see this group, their recommendations would then figure into those developers who, and most of them do, are asking something of us. They have to commit to a development agreement with us. That development agreement can take these recommendations, make them part of an agreement, and then it becomes binding to the developer. The committee itself would not have any binding legislation behind it. Yet, when you enter into a contract with a developer because he or she wants an incentive or he or she wants whatever they want, then we can take those architectural suggestions and say, "Well, if you want this from us, you got to give us this." And we feel that that, I still have to work out those details to make sure of all the legalities there, as the mayor was saying, but I think that is how we would approach it. Now, of course, we wanted to meet with if those three members of the committee make sure that they may have some suggestions as well as to how we can move forward. So, it will take us a few, a couple of weeks to get this kind of fleshed out and bring it back to you.
Jim, I do want to mention that in talking to Dr. Bennett and he has done some similar advisory work, if you will, in Arkansas. And I have talked to several architects, architectural firms, and commercial development firms that do downtown work that tell me that really in a scenario when they come to a community other than where they're based, they typically look, you know, they're looking for guidance. You can go and look at our, you know, we've all gotten lots and lots of emails on both sides of this subject and I continually hear about the apartment structures in the downtown and the dislike of those, but if you think about it, we have, we have a... But if you think about it, we have a set of guidelines for people to go by. Now, those guidelines really, what you see is what the guidelines give them, and that is the brick color, the type windows, the... I mean, it's very specific. So maybe having some flexibility and guidance from people with Dan and David's expertise will be beneficial to the process. It's what I'm hopeful of. Now, you know, in my mind, nothing ventured, nothing gained. I mean, we can continue to go along like we are at whatever heights we're going to be with no outside input, I mean, and we're going to get what we're going to get. So I think this is worth a try, and hey, we hadn't spent any money if we have to go a different direction, but I think we're very fortunate to have some individuals like this.
Mayor, this is an exciting opportunity for our community. These three individuals are talented, they're principled, and they're invested in Auburn, and they bring a lot to the table. I'm personally excited just to see them involved in our city, period.
Well, Ron, I got to tell you that Ron called me about three weeks ago and threw this idea out, and I was a little perplexed over, you know, who we're going to get, how we're going to do it, and there's still a lot of details out there, but I think Ron had a great idea of getting the ball rolling here. We've got great buy-in from these three individuals, so I hear no opposition in letting Mr. Bustin get it done.
We will have something for you at the...
All right.
...on the seventeenth.
Mayor, what kind of timeline are we looking at to establish this?
Well, all of these individuals, these three individuals are on board and ready to go to work. Jim, I think Jim said by the next council meeting he'd like to have us something to look at, so that'd be the timeline.
I would expect that we would get them to work fairly quickly.
All right. Thank you for that. So now, we will move forward with citizens' communications. If you would like to address the council, please understand that you have five minutes in which to do so. We would ask you to come up front and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Susan Honeycutt. My address is 1676 Eastern Court in Auburn. Good to see y'all again. Happy Easter belated, Happy Easter. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that. We had recommended, as part of the Keep Auburn Lovely Task Force, back in last summer, that you authorized us to convene, that Dan Bennett did one of the top five recommendations that we had moving forward for Auburn was to put into place an architecture review board and have Dan Bennett head that up. And he has been serving, as you know, at your request on the planning commission, so I think this is a good thing. So, thank y'all. And we had used Mountain Brook as that organization, how it might work from an operation standpoint, so I think we're on the right track. So, thank you. And to follow up on that, design and consistency in looking at it and putting it in various development agreements is important, I agree with that, and it doesn't take the place of the height. The height is important, especially now that we're looking at the overlay, because that's right down by Tumor's Corner. And that's, as somebody said last meeting, that's sacred territory, and it is. And we don't want to become like the Alamo, where we've got all these tall buildings around this little bitty Tumor's Drug Store. So we can't be having that. So, yes, for the architecture, and a lot of developers appreciate that. I mean, Michael Dilworth was on our task force as well. He said, "I'd rather know upfront what exactly I'm required to do, rather than find it out retroactively." So they're on this, so this is a good thing. And, again, like I mentioned last time, is that the streets are already in place, so adding this ten feet already makes more of a claustrophobic sort of situation when people go downtown. And, Architecture 101, because that's what I was in before business, is that it is a people-sized place, it's a sense of place, and by it being more of a human size as far as height, then that encourages people to be more pedestrian and to make it more of a walkable downtown. The higher you get it, the more people stay inside, so it doesn't induce people to become more pedestrian. So the height does matter, it's not an either-or, it's a one-and. And then, to speak to some of the things that you've mentioned in the past, Tommy, and then General Moore's son mentioned last time, is that buildings do dictate and drive culture. The reason we're a small, little college town is because we've got small, little college-town buildings, and you start taking that away and making them more high-rise, like the skyscraper curse that the Von Mieson Institute talks about, then all of a sudden the type of people that you're drawing is more city people with city values. Now, when I left Auburn, I went to Washington DC and lived there for many years, into Los Angeles. Those are cities. And I'm telling you, they will run over you as soon as look at you. It is not the wonderful community where people stop and want to know how your mom's doing and wants to know, you know, just how's your child doing, you know, and more of a community-oriented individual where the people are the best. So I don't want to start monkeying with this and make Atlanta too or New York City too, so the height does matter. And y'all can make a difference by doing that tonight, because my dad went to school here, my granddad, my great-granddad, you know, you grew up here, a lot of y'all grew up here, and y'all want to be able to hand this down to your sons and daughters that your mom loved or your dad loved. So we've got to be able to preserve what needs to be preserved while we grow, keep the good, and expand on it for our families. And also, don't forget, the more height we've got, what about the air pollution, the air quality? All of a sudden, we're all squished in there, we get no sunlight, and we've got way more cars. So this is something that we didn't consider either. So you can vote no tonight and do something about it, or y'all could even have it open for a vote for all the citizens of Auburn. That's a different option, too. Okay? Vote no tonight.
All right, who would like to be next? Yes, sir.
My name's Dan Kaidle. I live at 1173 Town Creek Drive. I'm not going to spend a lot of time up here. I'm a new resident of Auburn, been here a few years. My wife and I love it here. We moved from a big city, Jones Creek, part of the La La area. I'd like to be, at least support, I think what you're doing with the architecture review board or whatever you're going to call it is a wonderful idea. I think it's a great idea. I was there when Mr. Bennett spoke about how this, the height recommendation ought to be looked at, and he very much said, "You've got to look at the design, you've got to look at the quality of construction, you've got to have standards." And then the height doesn't matter as much, as long as you design a building that doesn't make it look like it's just a cloistered effect. When I heard that, I said, well, here's a guy that makes sense. He ought to be the person who recommends what the height ought to be. Now, he was on the planning commission, he voted yes for that, but I think he and several of the folks you've mentioned tonight, let them decide what it ought to be. I don't, it's too bad you're going to have a vote tonight, you should table it, if that's possible, because I don't think you ought to vote on that. I'm not against the seventy-five foot, I'm not exactly for it. I just think it shouldn't be something that should be put in place right now without this board recommending what ought to be done about the standards in offer. Thank you for your time. I'm going to yield my three minutes and not sit up here and bore everybody, but thank you very much.
All right, who would like to be next?
I live on Ping Court. I want to urge the council to vote yes on this proposal. I first came to Auburn on the first Saturday of October in 1957. I know all about the loveliest villages in the history, but to say that the university has not outgrown the downtown area is simply not factual. I think we'll find if the height ordinance is approved, if the new construction is approved, the current merchants in that area are going to have business they never thought possible, because there will be more traffic downtown, and that's good for everyone. So I'll keep it simple. Please vote yes.
All right, thank you. Who would like to be next?
Kelly Griswold, 425 North College Street. First off, Mr. Fallon, thank you so much for your service, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Did not realize all of your history there, but as a veteran, I certainly appreciate it and honor you for that. Thank you. I asked the three of the city council members to consider bringing the thing up, the height thing up during the committee of the whole, perhaps revising it, changing the ordinance a bit, changing the wording, along the same lines of what we've been hearing tonight about some type of design consideration. You know, right now, what you've got isn't all or nothing, that's your plan on voting on this evening. It's either seventy-five feet or it's not, you know, one or the other. And you can guarantee that the minute you vote yes, the plans will be written in concrete for whatever designs people already have in mind for downtown. So if you were ever to vote, you know, just tonight, all or nothing, you know, obviously I'm not real optimistic that you would deny the increase, seeing that you only need five votes tonight. But, you know, you've got a couple of promising projects have been presented, the Fleming Project or Watley Building, whichever you want to call it, and obviously the Southern Living Project. And they're both very promising projects, and so, I mean, I certainly understand any reluctance to shut those down. But when you deferred the vote to tonight from last night, I'm quoting you, Ron, from the paper this morning, "Most of the public is just realizing this project is going to happen here just in the last few days." Well, again, the vote is not on the project, the vote is on the college edge overlay, the whole thing. So don't, please don't get, you know, tunnel vision on this great, wonderful project, and it may be super-duper, it may be wonderful, may bring all the business this gentleman hopes for, but I don't know. I think you're just writing a blank check at this point if you say tonight, seventy-five feet, boom, and then you've got this great idea on the back burner to come back and have some design implications or influences on your future decisions. So a vote tonight against the height increase is not necessarily a vote against those projects. Just please keep that in mind. You know, we all know that the university has got to go. I agree, hundred percent. I'm ready for that area to be redeveloped myself. It looks bad, it's not the kind of thing that we really want in downtown Auburn. But again, the ordinance changes everything, not just where that one project will be. So, I mean, there is a way to alleviate concerns and still build your higher buildings. You know, you've got all these buildings that are going to face college on one side and right on the other, perhaps the right street portion should be seventy-five feet, and then step down to something more, something slower, when it actually faces college. So when you look up, you're not looking up on a huge tower of some sort. I mean, there are ways to incorporate those things into the design. If you take the initiative, have your panel, your board, your committee, whatever you're going to call it, work with the developers on their development agreements, and make these things work for the city of Auburn. You know, they just got to... So I encourage you to defer this vote tonight. Send it back to the planning staff, have them work with your task force, allow the task force to do their work before you decide tonight on seventy-five foot, yes or no. So, again, please take a step back, write an ordinance that protects what's unique, the character of downtown, and still allows you to have the growth that you seek. Thank you very much.
All right, who would like to be next? Yes, sir.
Warren Tedwell, 1654 Piedmont Drive. Good evening. I wanted to quickly cover a couple of things before I move on with what I want to say tonight. Last time I was quite pointed with my remarks, and my tone wasn't exactly how I had planned it. I didn't mean to have to rush out, but my wife suffers from a chronic disease and was forced to go out early if she didn't feel well. Mr. Dawson, I know you can relate. That brings me what I'd like to say to you. I pointed out early in my remarks two weeks ago that I wasn't claiming that I or anyone who felt that way I described was necessarily correct. I was just saying a great number of Auburn citizens feel that way, that the city no longer belongs to people here, but to men in suits from far away who see our town as nothing more than a profit center. While some feel our city council and planning commission are complicit, I know there are honorable people in our city's leadership. I tend to judge people by how they treat people in service industries, and you and I, Mr. Dawson, have had previous dealings, even though you probably didn't remember. What I remember is that you always treated me with kindness and respect. My remarks weren't meant to be taken as a personal attack. Personally, Mr. Dawson, I believe you to be a decent man. Mr. Main, a lot of your constituents have spoken highly of you to me as well. But moving on to the true focus and intent of my remarks, I recently returned to Auburn after volunteering in West Africa for a year. Seeing some of the utilitarian and monolithic buildings downtown were like a kick in the gut. That sick, slightly angry feeling you felt here in my rewritten version of the Auburn Creed is something many of us feel when we travel downtown now. I wanted to get your attention last meeting, I feel I did. The point I truly hope to convey to you tonight is that the anger I encounter when speaking to Auburn citizens isn't that this development downtown is being done, it's the perception of how it's being done. A good example occurred in the last meeting when parking was discussed for the proposed hotel. You're looking at 120 rooms with multiple guests, not to mention staffing of that hotel. Parking concerns were glossed over with our working with the city for spaces in the public deck. It felt like lip service to an obvious and overwhelming concern with this development. Yes, it is in the infancy of planning, but to be honest, the whole thing felt like a conclusion that had already been reached and we were just going through the motions. But please make no mistake, the people are paying attention even if they aren't here, and there will be a tangible reaction to the decisions of this council and the planning commission as it pertains to the continued development of Auburn. I implore you to not see me as Chicken Little, but kind of a canary in the coal mine. I see a wave of righteous anger building, and it's going to transfer from emails and social media posts to candidates for office and door-to-door campaigns, but I'm not here to blast you and run this week. You are the elected leaders of this city, you sought these offices you currently hold. While many of us as citizens are encouraging our fellow citizens to become more civically engaged and active, please do what you need to do and what you are elected to do and lead on this. Waiting for citizens to engage you isn't enough. There is a significant portion of Auburn citizens who no longer feel heard and feel powerless to do anything when it comes to the current elected leadership. These issues of mistrust and doubt must be met head-on. I propose a series of town hall events this summer throughout the city, perhaps on Saturdays, where those who cannot make these weekday meetings can attend, and I'm very encouraged by what you said earlier about the planning board. I think that is an excellent idea, and thank you for that. Definitely feel heard there. Write editorials in OE needs to communicate your personal feelings, if not vision, for the future of Auburn. I don't know, I don't have the answers, maybe some of you have better ideas. But for our city to progress in a healthy manner, I truly feel this must be addressed. And I had some other things to say, but I feel like I've said what I needed to say, and I'll leave it at that, and I'm here, I'm not going to take off, I don't have a sick wife this week, so if that's it, I'll go take my seat now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who would like to be next?
Oh, thank you. I haven't been at any of these meetings regarding, my name's Tom Haley, hadn't been at any of these meetings, it's been recent, but a dozen years... But a dozen years ago, I sat on a panel.
Could we get your address?
Oh, 1695 East University Drive. I sat on a panel and it became very discussionary and heated, and we came up with the 75 feet. It was a negotiation down from 85 feet. Years went by and there was never building, never a building built at that height till the VAV was built. Now, I want to back up and tell you, I own a building in downtown Auburn, Legends of Magnolia. I developed that building and I own most of it. I love that building. If it doesn't fit into Auburn, I don't know what does. I have enjoyed seeing what went up behind me and around me. When I was in school here 45 years ago, where the VAV is was Meadow's Garage, where that building actually sat was a dump for tires and engines. Some of y'all may remember that, it's been here. I also sat on a panel that outlawed, or I think we call it non-permitted uses for service stations downtown. If the Chevron that's down there happened to get loaded, it couldn't go back. There's an awfully nice building going there. Where the Checkers Building is, this is all on Eastland where the Checkers Building is, and I can tell you, that's a great improvement. Any community from Troy in the southeast, Troy, Alabama, to anywhere in the southeast would welcome these buildings. Your job is to look at this overall, I think, and that's what I've tried to do. What's our job in Auburn? We educate people in a lot of ways. You have to have revenue to educate people. I figure the VAV is worth a million dollars a year to build in Auburn. You've got two others coming along like 40 and 50 million dollar buildings. I don't think they'll be out of place. When you talk about on the other side of the VAV, that was an omelet shop when I was in school for a dozen years. It sat vacant and looked like Beirut when it was bombed. Okay? I think the process has been great for you guys. I have no interest in any of these projects, but I've noticed this from afar. When we had the last discussions, which I wasn't in, there was some lobbying for certain people, some in this room, for their property heights to go up. Some of those people may or may not sell their property. But as I know, we're fixed to build a new high school. The money that can come from these buildings will amortize that debt. I'm glad that people are selling some of their properties. I'm glad the architect committee will be formed and help with that thing. These are great economic pieces for Auburn. I don't want to lose the self. I will tell you this, as I've walked around Auburn, Auburn isn't flat downtown. I can tell you, when I stand in certain places, my building looks a lot taller than others do. The VAV was built in the lowest elevation in downtown Auburn. It isn't as tall as other buildings. The Auburn University Conference Center, I don't need to tell you guys this, there are many buildings that are taller than 75 feet. You know, without getting into property rights, I think you're headed the right way. I would just urge you to make this decision on what's best for Auburn in the future. Not just aesthetically, economically, what you have done and what has evolved in downtown Auburn, in my opinion, is great. If you look at some of the icons from J&amp;M, the Wares, who redid their building, that is a much nicer building, you still have that sense of place. Anders? And I believe y'all's building has changed, evolved over a period of time. Auburn's changed, but I, I think we should be proud, and Bill, I'm gonna echo what you said, that a lot of people would like these problems. Done a great job. What I just showed you is in a 10-year period, your tax revenue on just sales tax has doubled. That is great management in a 10-year period. That's just what's going to pay for these new schools. Along with these economic engines that you're creating, it's not a whole lot different than the village placements we talked about at one time. We talked about them in other places in Auburn. But I just urge you to think about this as an overall picture for Auburn, not this one incident. I will tell you, I'm gonna be disappointed if it doesn't get unanimous votes for this. I think if you're looking at the future of Auburn and where we've been and where we're going, you got to consider this seriously at this moderate height increase. You can't tell the difference between 75 and 65, especially with the different elevations you're walking on. Thank you. Good luck.
All right. Who would like to be next?
Oh. All right, Brian.
Brian Snyder, 2258 Arlington Court, Mayorham, members of the council. Currently serve as chairman of the Board of Directors for the Auburn Chamber. And I'd like to share with you a resolution from the Board of Directors and the Auburn Chamber of Commerce this third day of April 2018 in support of the Auburn City Council and the adoption of the text amendment to Article 5, Table 5-4, Development Standards Within the College Edge Overlay District, Building Height From 65 to 75 Feet. Whereas the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, a 1,000-member-strong organization, represents the majority of businesses in the city of Auburn, and whereas the individual members are stakeholders in this community, and whereas the Auburn Chamber Board of Directors supports the growth and redevelopment of downtown Auburn and what that means to the entire business community and everyone who lives and works in Auburn, and whereas the Auburn Chamber has long been involved in the planning process and appreciates the thorough and thoughtful progression, and whereas the Auburn Chamber understands it is important to proceed diligently. The Auburn Chamber feels it is important to ensure that every business is given the opportunity to thrive and that property owners are not faced with unnecessary obstacles. And whereas the Auburn Chamber supports the leadership of the Auburn City Council and their ability to make informed decisions on behalf of the citizenry, and whereas the Auburn Chamber Board of Directors feels the 75-foot structural limit allows property owners more opportunity for redevelopment while preserving the character of our downtown. Now, therefore, the premises considered be hereby resolved as follows. The Auburn Chamber Board of Directors supports the 75-foot structural limit recommended by the Auburn Planning Commission and recommends the Auburn City Council vote in favor of the ordinance, done this third day of April 2018. Thank you.
All right. Who would like to be next?
My name's Jennifer Smith. I live at 908 East Magnolia Avenue. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. There are two points I want to make. I am new to Auburn, I did my undergrad here, I have a master's of architecture. I'm really excited to hear about Dan Bennett and David Hinson, who are proposed to be on this review board. I think that's an excellent idea. And I love that you've looked at other communities that have done something similar as a precedent study and seen success in that. I think it, it can be implemented well here. Two things I'm thinking about is the economy is not the only value we have at Auburn. Economic drivers are, are especially important, but it's not all that we consider in developing a parcel of land and creating a city and a community for people. I think as the review process moves forward, regardless of the building height, considering place is important and lack of gentrification, but also looking at the systems that need to be in place in order to increase density. Not only, so we look at parking as an issue, and that's true, and that will only increase as you have more people downtown, as the university grows.